All right, so we're going to reopen the meeting after having been an executive session. And we're going to certify that no action was taken. We only discussed limited personnel matters and threatened or pending litigation as identified on the agenda. So.
I make that motion.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Okay, Beard? Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
All right. So we're now.
Make a motion.
Reopen the meeting, yep, and we certify that we took no action on the items that were on that agenda. Do we need to vote that again?
I thought that's what we just did, so.
All right.
There's no action.
I make a motion, we reopen the meeting.
Second.
We already did that.
All right.
We're good.
We reopened.
Good. Now you're gonna go back to it.
All right. Now we're back.
Sorry, guys.
Elected official department updates. Back to the regular agenda. Are there any department updates? Ms. Jennifer? Emergency management.
Good morning. Just a clinic update and a couple of test kit updates. The clinics have been kind of, the numbers have been coming down just a little bit. We had less than sixty yesterday. So we did have the discussion yesterday about pulling the hours or maybe shortening the hours and maybe doing a nine to eleven instead of a nine to one type of thing, depending on how many people were signed up. We will still have the clinic on Monday. The county will be closed for the holiday, but we will still have that clinic going on. And the hours on that one will still be nine to one. We'll announce the different hours if we decide to go that direction. And test kits, on the shots, I was looking through numbers, and since March of 2021, we've put in shots and arms close to ten thousand. So that's a lot. Yeah. So test kits, I, a big thank you to agencies that have helped. Carlsbad, the city of Carlsbad has helped, the facilities department, CPD, Artesia Fire Department, Artesia PD, the Village of Loving, the mayor's office from there helped put on an event. The fire services, Cordova that's up there in Loving, he helped as well. And those have been going really well between all of us. We've put out seven thousand four hundred tests. And my office just received more. So if you go into findatestnm.org, you can see all of the different places that I have delivered to and that we've shared test kits with. And that's, that's all over the state, so you can see where each EM has put out tests. So we will be having one in each town again. So we'll have another one in the Village of Loving, we'll have another one in the city of Carlsbad, and another one in Artesia. So I'll be in touch with dates and we'll just talk to Jerry about helping with advertisement for that. We do have a vaccination bus that is part of the FEMA bus that is going around. And they will be all over the Eddie County and... So they're gonna be on Mesa Street, eleven twelve North Mesa, from ten to six on Fifteenth and Sixteenth. And then they're gonna move to different locations, but goodtimes.vaccinenm.org, and that will tell you where that bus will be. They are gonna move to the college for, was that yesterday, maybe? And then they're gonna go to Artesia, to one of the churches up there, and park for a couple of days up there as well. So, other than that, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can, I just wanna pass on, I've been in a ton of meetings last couple of weeks, and your name's come up quite a few times, of huge compliments to everything you've done for all. So I just wanna pass that along, that it's recognized how much you're doing, and there's a lot of appreciation for it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other departments? Chief Mack?
So just a couple of things, since I didn't get with you guys last meeting. Our new ERS system is live. We are operating in it, so now we are in one account. We'll be able to pull better statistics through that to see what each individual volunteer's doing, what the trucks are doing, how many there are accurately response numbers. We did add CFD and AFD personnel to our report tracker so that we can track and show how many people they're sending out and things like that. So hopefully that'll help us gather better statistics. The Schedule It app is up and going. We had an all-north meeting last week and an all-south meeting. Made it a mandatory meeting, and we got pretty decent turnout. Not every volunteer showed up, but all the ones that did are now signed into it. So it's a way for us to be able to get information out to them and for them to sign up for any special events or standbys or anything that we need. So it'll help get that communication line from the top to the bottom better. The Loving truck is in service. I believe they got the last of the equipment put on it. We're just waiting on Sid and Martin to come and do the graphics, which will finalize those today. We're getting ready to cut the PO for the medical stuff, the AEDs, the monitors, the auto pulses. You guys pre-approved a million dollars or up to, I think we end up spending nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, so. CFD is having a demo done today, so if they were to change over to Zoll, that would put Artesia, Carlsbad, and Eddie County all utilizing the same exact equipment, so. Be a discussion for later if they need some help or something like that for everything that they do for us, so. Aside from that, I think that's about all. We've been busy with calls. Your requests from the last meeting. We have met with Mr. Davis, and we are working on a plan to be able to present to y'all to hopefully make a plan for that.
Along those lines, the, the work that was initiated for the Village of Loving, having the EMT there, I saw the mayor Friday evening and spoke with him, and he was just very, very pleased. He said in the time that we've had the man stationed there, several lives have been saved, and he rattled them off. He knew. So that few minutes makes a difference. And there's tangible evidence of the, having that resource available is benefiting the community of loving it as we speak today, so.
And it's gonna get better if we move forward with.
Absolutely right. Absolutely right. So, thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Other feedback from departments? All right. Legislative update. Two days and change before, what do they call it? Cindy, didn't, whatever that, whatever that Greek term is, it means they're done. This is, this is feedback I got last night. Reached the critical point in the legislative session where tempers increase and productivity declines. The governor's crime package and environmental bills seem to be the main sticking point for most of the negotiations and deals. In crafting the deals, many of the conversations have shifted internally for those that have seats at the legislative leadership table. On the Senate side, many bills are being held due to disagreements on the two, on the two major election bills. On Saturday, Senate Bill Eight, a Democratic-sponsored election bill that was laid out by the sponsors after some debate, Republicans put a call on the Senate, meaning everyone must be in their seats before debate and a vote may be taken. There are two senators, Schmedes and Candelaria, who have not been in the chambers and are not excused, as it always happens with a call. State police were sent out to search for the, and return them to the roundhouse to end the call. The Senate continues to debate bills, but Leader Worth will hold Republican bills hostage and not call for the debate until the call is lifted for a vote or a vote is taken on Senate Bill Eight. The Republicans would like Senate Bill Six to pass, which is a bipartisan election bill. The House side is where most, see most of the environmental bills waiting for action. House Bill Six, the Clean Fuel Act, did pass on party lines out of the Government Affairs and Elections Committee. The bill, which would be terrible for New Mexico business, is not anticipated to be called. In fact, it's been pulled and is sitting on the Speaker's table. So our understanding, the Speaker's not supportive of the bill, as currently written, and they know the Republicans will debate for the maximum three hours. At this point in the session, debate hours are precious on the floor. House Joint Resolution Two and Senate Joint Resolution Two, the Green Amendment, have both been killed, which is really good news for counties and municipalities. Senate Bill Fourteen, the Clean Fuel Standard, is also waiting to be heard in government, elections, and Indian affairs. It was scheduled for yesterday morning, but the meeting was canceled. The chairman of that committee was the individual who was arrested for aggravated DWI that morning, so.
Louis.
Yeah. Georgianne Lewis, so she, so that committee is kind of in limbo. I don't know that that bill will come forth. Continue to go back and forth on whether there'll be a hydrogen bill or not. If hydrogen moves, it'll be a deal cut between the two major parties. The Hultec bills, after conversations with the governor and the timing of the session, we don't think those are gonna move any further. They've both been tabled. Still a chance one gets through, but it's getting to be a longer shot. Senate version is Senate Judiciary. Be very difficult to get out right now. House version is scheduled for the floor, but we don't think the Speaker will call it for debate. Senate Bill Five and House Bill One sixty-three, the respective chambers' tax omnibus bills have both currently stripped out the moratoriums, which would disallow counties and municipalities from exercising their GRT options. Those, those, that moratorium was in the original bill, but our local legislators have been key in getting that removed from those bills. What did I say? I thought I saw something this morning on House Bill One sixty-three. I'll have to go back and look. A lot of tenuous things flying around and not a lot of time to make it happen, but lots of things are on the calendar, but they're mostly at the Speaker and the majority leader's call. There have not been a lot of bills that have passed one house or the other, or that have been passed by both houses, both chambers, sorry. And the time is drawing short for that to happen. I did see that Senate Bill Forty-eight, which is the budget bill, was approved by the House late last night. So they have one of the budget bills done, the other, the House bill is in the Senate. I assume they'll reconcile it. So the major portion of the thirty-day session, I think, has been accomplished. But Thursday noon, it's, by statute is done, right? So we'll continue to watch S three sixty.
Did you say anything about SB one sixteen?
The, that's the courthouse bill?
Yes.
It's been tabled. It's, it has, it got a recommendation but did not get scheduled. So, don't know what's tied to the budget or what's not tied to the budget and how that may... They, like, there were multiple tax bills, social security tax, those are all in one bill now. So whether or not something like the courts gets in another bill or gets in the budget, I don't... I haven't looked at the full, I want to say rewrite, what do they call them? The redraft of the budget bill to know. And I guess it's pages and pages and pages. I see the summary, but not the, I haven't seen the total one. S three sixty is staying on top of things for us. They're in, and both, both chambers, what do they call it? Adjourned around midnight last night. They're both scheduled to reconvene at eleven today. Committee meetings are going on now, so they're, in theory, getting ready to go back into chamber sessions, so. Fingers crossed no madness will occur in the next twenty, forty-eight hours, but.
That's when it happens.
Yeah, I know. Anyway, that's what I've got for legislative update. If you have questions, I'll see what I can find on those. See where I'm at here. All right. Any questions on legislative update? If not, we'll move to the travel request consent agenda.
No move?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no emergency business. All our legislators are up in Santa Fe. Any elected official comments? Sheriff's left. County manager comments? Sorry. I didn't mean that to be. I apologize. It was not intentional. So there are a couple of things that I think you need to be aware of. The BLM, so there was some discussion about a shooting range for North Eddie County. There are several copies there. So the BLM has a proposal that would require a sponsor to help develop a shooting range. It's east of the city of Artesia, several miles on BLM ground. It's a place where folks are currently going out and shooting. The BLM's drive and motivation is basically to try and stop some of the illegal dumping that occurs out on those sites. And there's some photos in that packet that I just shared with you, that the BLM put together, of what goes on out there. Their proposal is to find a partner. They, we had a meeting with Sue of Artesia, the mayor, myself, a few other folks, about trying to take this on. One, one possibility is the gun club that's in Artesia right now, they may be willing to take this on. What the proposal would be is to set up a long-range rifle station, a mid-range rifle station, a pistol station, a couple of pistol stations. Fence the property so that it would limit access to the outer parts that might prevent the illegal dumping. There are some oil and gas operations that I think are west of where this boundary would be. The, the BLM is saying, you know, they'll help. What they would like to do is transition the property out of their stewardship and into the county or somebody else's stewardship. Tracy Hughes said that'd take a couple of years to accomplish, but in the meantime, everybody would work together to try and... And, and they're right, you know, what's, what was done down on BLM property down by Six Mile Dam, south and east of the city of Carlsbad, it was, somebody said, "It's a place where people go to do shenanigans." Well, if you improve the area, sometimes the shenanigans stop and people use it. And, and that did occur down there at Six Mile Dam. There were some improvements made. They had some community sponsors, labor and material, and they really improved that down there, and it looks really nice. So the same concept could apply here. I wanted you to be aware of that. If you want to proceed, we can engage with the BLM and see how to do that. I can reach out to the gun club and see what they might be interested in, so we could continue to progress that. The U.S. Forest Service, in their plan for the Lincoln National Forest, has proposed withdrawal of several thousand acres for wilderness designation. And in Eddie County, the BLM had put a notice of something just under three thousand acres that would be, I was gonna make a copy of this map, and I didn't do it before the meeting this morning. I apologize. For those in the room, you can see the purple designated areas, the with the hash mark in it, is what they're proposing to withdraw and convert to wilderness. The solid purple are existing wilderness, but here in Eddie County, this portion down here, which is near the caverns, there's some land. But there's opposition in Chavez and Otero counties. I've had some meetings with some of the managers and commissioners from those counties opposing the Forest Service plan. That's probably something we need to participate in if you're concerned about removing public lands and putting them under wilderness designation. In this particular instance, a lot of the, the area they would designate as wilderness already has improvements on it, roads and pipelines and different things. So it doesn't fit the criteria for wilderness in the Forest Service plan, so. Anyway, more to come on that. There's been a lot of discussions around the waters of the U.S. The comment period on that closed a week ago. There have been multiple comments about the EPA and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers changing the definition of terms for waters of the U.S. There was some legislation, I think, or executive mandate that said to change it back to what it was in 2015. So in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? The administration at that time reduced the scope of what constituted waters of the U.S. The EPA wanted to go back to an earlier version. So some of the problem with that is strange ditches and other things, thermal water, you know, be considered waters of the U.S., which is a really arbitrary, and in this part of the world, really a hindering definition. There's a case before the U.S. Supreme Court, and it's up in Idaho, where they're claiming that this wetlands, although it doesn't connect to any open waters, is waters of the U.S. And this couple has been fighting this through all the courts. It's now, has been scheduled to be heard before the U.S. Supreme Court. And so this morning, there was an article. The Western Republican Caucus of the Congress has asked the EPA and the U.S. Army Corps to stand down until the Supreme Court hears that case and decides that case before they make another unenforceable definition. So anyway, more to come on that. It does, it does have an effect on us. Then there's a U.S. Senate Bill Twenty-nine eighty, which basically says, it's, it's a land take. It allows for the voluntary donation of existing leases to take them off the rolls. So it basically fits in the thirty-thirty. Chavez County has a resolution opposing that. That may be something else that, given the limited availability of lands that are currently leased for grazing and other things, where it basically takes it off the tax rolls and takes it off all these other things, so. Anyway, those are the highlights of some of the things that I've been tracking and participating in. Any questions?
I've got a couple of questions, and maybe Cass can help you with the name. With this wildlife, what is that plan we were working, the state was supposed to, BLM was working on three or four years ago? It's supposed to be updated every ten years, and I think our state's five years behind that. We were trying to get it through before we had this current governor in place. Louis Derrick can help me with it.
I, I don't remember what that specific plan.
I can't think of.
Range management plan or something?
Something, and it's supposed to happen on a regular basis, and our, our state hasn't, shockingly, is behind on it. But I know that Chavas County is way ahead of us. They are really aggressive and done a fantastic job. And, and Louis Derrick is a, when I went to the meetings with him, he's the only one that would sit in the middle of the room, and BLM came to him. And that's a true statement. I mean.
He's still active in those dangerous species cases. You know, we have the, the guy from Arizona that we've, was a national.
Howard Hutchinson.
Howard Hutchinson, and they stay involved. Louis Derrick's right in the middle of that mess, just like he always has been.
And I know he just talked to me about that waters of the U.S. He's real concerned about that. I think we've got someone in place that could really help us, yeah, a hundred percent. But that's really dangerous, because as you said, I mean, most of it's already got improvements. I don't know how it qualifies, but ranchers, it really hurts ranchers a great deal, especially on that Chavez, Otero, Eddie area. So I would, I would hope that we work hard with Chavez to, to catch up and continue to really work on those, so. But I couldn't remember the names of them.
So the BLM has their master resource management plan for their area, and it, it's due to be issued in 2022. They've been having public comments on it, but we can go talk to, to Ty Allen and say, "Hey, this, this wouldn't have been in the resource management plan, what's, what's going on here for the wilderness part?" So.
Maybe that was it, resource management, that sounds right.
Yeah, so that, the BLM, and once they update that, and it is on a, every few years, but they, they take, takes a while for the public comment and whatnot. But everything, all the permits for everything are based on the NEPA analysis and all those other things that go into that master resource management plan, as to what you can do where and what you can't. This, this office, you know, Jim Stovall and Ty Bryson, Ty Allen, Cody Leighton, I mean, they understand our area of the world. But once it leaves here and goes to DC, squirrely things happen, and so. Any support we can provide for them in terms of having the county voice heard, I think is important, as you say, to kind of get up to speed with Chavez County.
Yeah.
So.
That's it, resource management plan, that's exactly right, yeah.
All right. County Commissioner comments?
I, I'd just like to say, you know, we passed our illegal dumping bill. I've had lots of calls. I don't know if the rest of you have had any calls, but I've had lots of calls, and I've had to talk to lots of people, and they're all very appreciative of the ordinance that we did. I even had a call now that told me, said, "There's, out in Dark Canyon, there is a, a place where somebody has dumped a bunch of oil."
Drums.
Drums, full of oil, full of used oil, and they've been using them for target practice. So now we have that to clean up, but, you know, it's just like that. I'd love to catch them, because I'm not sure we could issue a violation for every one of the drums. And that would really mount up. And the first time that we can catch somebody like that that's doing something like that, that's just has total disregard for other people's property and, and our community as a whole, the sooner we can catch some of those guys, the better off we're gonna be, and we're gonna stop this.
Absolutely.
Want to start off with just appreciation for ten thousand vaccinations, given with county participation. That's amazing. So everybody that's been involved in that, I just really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I had the opportunity to meet with our governor on Friday, and when she was here, we had some time, and we spoke independently about a lot of the issues that the board has, has concerns about, specifically medical care, access to medical care, our substance abuse problems down here. I felt that she was very attentive, and I felt that she was very empathetic to those needs. I felt that she was very attentive, and I felt that she was very empathetic to those needs, and she understood, you know, she knows what the situation is as far as healthcare system goes. What struck me is I felt that, I felt that I was very happy to see that she was here listening to, to what our concerns and what our needs were, and, and I just respect that. I respect anybody that's willing to come down and, and see for themselves and, and then see what we can do to work together. I think that that's what has to happen with this disconnect. We have to be able to work and communicate with one another, so I, I, I found it, you know, very, I just, I was very happy and very pleased with the conversation, and it was just a pleasure for me to meet her, so. As always, I just really thank the county, I thank all the hard work on the beh, on behalf of the county. Alan, Cass, it seems like you guys have just a ton of work to do all the time. And, and so I just really appreciate it, so, anyway, that's all I have to say.
I wanted to congratulate, I think y'all got a new football coach, is that right? I saw that announcement that the city hired Oliver Sukup, is that?
Yeah.
Am I on board with that? So y'all are really lucky, 'cause he was actually, he's from Craftcroft. I, I was, I played football with him, he's a great guy, I think he'll be good, good, hopefully good help for y'all. Not good enough to beat Artesia, but good enough for everything else, and I'll let him know that, I'm not afraid, but. No, good hire, glad to see that, he's a, he's a good guy, hopefully he'll be, be good for the program, so. And then everything else, like I was, I said earlier, I mean, we've had lots of meetings in Artesia lately. It feels like it, I go from one to another to another with discussions, and every time the county comes up, y'all are talked about very well, and, and I think that, that says a lot for the leadership, that says a lot for what y'all have got accomplished. I appreciate what y'all do and, and keep it up, because, you know, I know a lot of times we think people don't pay attention or care what we do, but I do think the public is noticing that the efforts y'all are putting in, and, and it sure makes everyone else's job a lot easier, so. Thank y'all for that, keep it up. If there's anything we can do to help support it, I think we're all here to help, so.
I'd like to back up to all of the land grab stuff going on. I was around when it was cattle-free in ninety-three, I've been through that. Louis Derrick was one of the main players in that. That's all this is, WOTUS, you know, the original definition, Waters of the U.S., navigable waters, not mud holes, not ponds, you know, not little old Black River. The stuff in the park, the Carlsbad National Park. All of this is about more government control, any way you look at it. And I think right now, anybody that thinks the government needs more control of our lives is, I don't know where they're coming from, but as a rancher, fourth-generation rancher in Eddie County, I'm just about done with government. We are very fortunate to have the BLM folks that we've got. They are in our corner, as you mentioned, and I privilege it and say that for the whole world to hear, they'll be in trouble. But, yeah, thi, this is, this is not good for anybody, so, before I get too deep, I'll quit.
Alright, with that, with that, motion to adjourn. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.